Thanks, everybody. If we could move to receipt of public comment. Do we have anything not on the agenda, speakers?
We do have a person that has signed up via webex. I do not see him, but the person is Alsu Daniali. Do we have anyone here? No, we do not have them present.
Okay, thank you. And then if I could have a motion for the receipt of correspondence.
Thank you. Moved by Commissioner Carter, second by Vice Chair Menthee. Please vote. Thank you. Motion passes with five ayes.
Thank you. Did anybody have any questions on them? No, okay. Moving on to the consent calendar items. We have C1, which is the approval of draft planning commission meeting minutes of May 8, 2024. I was absent at that time. I don't know if there's any questions on those.
I was also absent.
Yes. For the three members present. Oh, okay. Can we have a motion to approve those?
Thank you. Moved by Vice Chair Menthee, second by Commissioner Jones. Please vote. Thank you. Motion passes with three ayes, and we have an abstain from Chair Rollman and Commissioner Berset.
Thank you. We can move on to our first and expansion of an existing fueling station, surface parking and associated project design features, and site improvements at 13431 to 13463 Washington Boulevard. If we could please have a staff presentation.
Good evening, Chair Rollman, Commissioners and community members. My name is Gabriela Silva, Associate Planner in the current Planning Division and the City's Case Manager for this project. Tonight, I will present the proposed fueling station relocation and expansion at the noted address, commonly known as the Costco site, and will go over the project description, entitlement process, and environmental assessment. The application, excuse me, the applicant's presentation will follow during the public hearing. Project consultants are also here to answer questions. The project consists of demolition of the existing fueling station, including all related improvements, demolition of two retail and food retail structures, and construction of the proposed fueling station, project design features that address neighbors' concerns and related site improvements. The proposed project site is a 3.2-acre area within the overall commercial center and is in the commercial regional retail zone where fueling stations are a permitted use. The yellow area and green outline areas show the general project site work area in the context of the overall site and the surrounding streets, which include commercial and mixed use along Washington Boulevard and residential neighborhoods in the abutting streets just beyond the commercial corridor. The existing site plan can be found on sheet DD 12-19 of Attachment 4, which is page four of that PDF. The proposed project site plan shown here demonstrates the proposed layout of the project with the fueling station being relocated from the green outline area to the yellow outline area at the west of the site and expanded to provide a total of 30 fueling positions, a 17.5-foot-high canopy, six fueling lanes, and additional bypass lanes. In place of the existing fueling station, new surface parking will be provided, totaling 54 spaces, including landscape and 20 EV charging stations. Three project design features are included in the project, including temporary noise barriers, use of specialized construction equipment, and coordination of construction activity with the city's stormwater project. Associated site improvements include landscape screening and six short-term and two long-term bicycle parking spaces. The process began in 2021 and included community meetings listed here. The main points of concern related to traffic congestion, vehicle circulation, and construction coordination. Additional public comments were received following publication of this meeting's agenda and expressed similar concerns. As part of the process, the project requires approval of a CUP modification and adoption of a CEQA clearance from the Planning Commission. As part of the CUP modification process, the project has been reviewed for conformance with applicable development standards such as setback in height. The project will provide code-required landscaping and additional screening landscape and improvements in the planted area along Washington, I'm sorry, Walnut Avenue. Vehicle and pedestrian circulation has been oriented to minimize potential conflicts. Project design features and conditions of approval are incorporated to address noise and construction traffic. The project has been developed in coordination with the city's stormwater project, and coordination will continue as the city's project continues to develop. As proposed and further conditioned, the required findings can be made as outlined in the proposed resolution. Pursuant to CEQA, the project was assessed as it relates to environmental impacts. Various technical studies were prepared, which determined the project is categorically exempt under Class 32 infill projects as the project meets applicable criteria as summarized here. In conclusion, staff recommends the Planning Commission adopt a Class 32 categorical exemption and approve the project subject to conditions of approval and standard code requirements as specified in Resolution Number 2024-P007. This concludes my presentation. The applicant is present this evening and will provide a presentation during public comment. Staff is available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, do we have any questions for staff? Clarifying questions before we hear from the applicant in the public comment? I just had two quick ones, Gabriela. The existing buildings that are going to be removed, are they currently in operation? Are they vacant? Do we know what the program use there was?
Yes, so they're currently vacant, and I believe the last occupants were a Verizon, a Subway, and a Starbucks.
Okay. And then, I mean, maybe the applicant could talk to this too, but the incoming charging station, what's the, is that, are they free? I doubt it, but like, what's the, how's that organized? Is it through Costco? Is it public?
Yeah, I think I'll defer to the applicant on that.
Okay.
We didn't have a requirement.
Okay, thank you. So Commissioners, can we have a motion to open the public hearing?
Moved by Commissioner Jones, second by Vice Chair Menthee. Vote. Thank you. Motion passes with five ayes.
Thank you. I think we should hear from the applicant and then take the other public comment. Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Julie Anderson with Bark Housing Consulting Engineers. I'm the planning consultant for Costco on this project. Thank you for your consideration of our request. We prepared a brief presentation to provide you with some additional project details. So as staff said, the project consists of relocating and expanding the existing Costco fuel facility. The project area includes the southwest corner of the shopping center and the existing fuel facility area. The intent of the project is to improve members' fueling experience, provide state-of-the-art new equipment, reduce queues, and improve overall site circulation. So the subject site is zoned commercial regional retail and is designated as regional center under the general plan. The fuel facility is a permitted use, and the project is consistent with all applicable city development standards and general plan policies. As staff mentioned, we held two neighborhood meetings for the project throughout the process, and we are respectfully requesting approval of a conditional use permit modification and a Class 32 categorical exemption. Staff touched briefly on this as well. For a project to qualify for a Class 32 exemption, it must meet certain conditions, including consistency with the general plan and zoning code, being located within city limits on a project site of five acres or less and substantially surrounded by urban uses. The site cannot have any value as habitat for endangered species. The project cannot result in significant impacts to traffic, noise, air quality, or air quality, or water quality. The site has to be adequately served by all utilities and public services and cannot be subject to any categorical exemption exceptions. Our application materials and the technical studies that we've prepared demonstrate that the project does meet all of the necessary findings for the Class 32 exemption. So the fuel facility, like I said, will be relocated to the southwest corner of the site. It's currently developed with the two vacant commercial buildings. We did look at alternate location options, including expanding the existing fuel facility as well as locations along the eastern boundary of the site within the parking field. But those locations came with multiple constraints that inhibited development in those areas, including the existing surrounding retail development, the site access driveways and drive aisles, and the residential properties to the north and east. The southwest location will separate the fuel circulation from the warehouse and in and out and other retail development circulation. Will provide EV parking in closer proximity to the warehouse entrance, and this location is surrounded by commercial development on all sides. So the existing fuel facility includes eight dispensers with 16 fueling positions. As we mentioned, is close to the warehouse entrance. And as we stated, there are the two commercial buildings in the southwest corner, just to give a brief overview of the existing conditions of the site. The new facility will include 15 dispensers with 30 fueling positions in outside fuel drop lane, which allows the fuel truck to deliver fuel to the site without entering the queue, state-of-the-art product monitoring control system, provide parking near the warehouse entrance, and the installation of 20 Level 3 EV charging stations. And those EV charging stations will be open to the public. They are not only for Costco members. So the new fuel facility is designed in accordance with all local, state, and federal regulations and will include new state-of-the-art equipment. The new facility will also include a number of upgraded and continuous safety features, including the outside fuel drop lane, additional dispenser spacing between the center dispensers and the front and end center dispensers, additional bypass lane width to allow for easier maneuverability to the center dispensers. The USTs and piping will be double-walled fiberglass, and fiberglass is used for its corrosion resistance and plasticity. There will also be a sensor and visual audible alarm that will go off if the fuel system is compromised in any way and will automatically shut down the fuel facility. And all piping will be vacuum monitored. Where if there is a breach, an alarm system will go off, and again, the fuel facility would shut down. The operations of the fuel facility will be consistent with the existing. There will always be an attendant on-site during operational hours. The fuel facility itself will be only open to Costco members, and there will be a red-green light system for dispenser availability mounted to the front of the column to indicate when a dispenser is available to vehicles in the queue. Some of the sustainability measures that the project is also providing, as I said, the installation of the 20 Level 3 fast chargers. All project lighting will be LED. All landscaping will be drought tolerant, and the fuel facility will utilize the recycling services of the warehouse. So as I said, we are expanding and relocating the existing fuel facility, and the project will remove the existing retail buildings. Costco's traffic consultant prepared a detailed traffic study in consultation with the city's transportation staff. The study covered project trip generation, evaluation of delays and queues at intersections along Washington Boulevard, and site access and internal circulation. The study concluded that there is a net decrease in peak hour and daily trips as existing permitted trips associated with the commercial buildings that will be removed are greater than those trips with the added fueling positions. The project would not degrade intersection operations in the study intersections on Washington Boulevard, and project would not add traffic on residential streets to the east, north, and west of the site. Kittle's and Costco's traffic engineer also prepared a parking and circulation assessment. So access to the fuel facility will continue to be a one-way flow oriented west to east with one ingress lane and one egress lane. There will continue to be the wide bypass lane between dispensers, and this location allows for greater separation between the warehouse and in and out as vehicles traveling to the various uses will use different routes within the site. The queue area location along the western boundary is away from key internal circulation driveways and intersections, especially the west driveway. As I said, the outside fuel drop lane allows fuel to deliver truck, or deliver fuel to the site without entering the queue area. And there will continue to be no site access from Walnut Avenue. That gate will remain an emergency access only. The increasing dispensers from 16, increasing fueling positions from 16 to 30 will substantially add processing capacity and reduce queues. Compared to the existing location, the project gives much more flexibility to manage queues. We prepared a queue management plan that will be implemented by the warehouse operators as needed, and it includes a phased approach depending on queue conditions. The project also includes the provision of mobility measures, including a new six bicycle rack, two employee bicycle lockers, the 20 EV charging stations, and the pedestrian pathways. The canopy design is designed consistent with the existing warehouse design and overall shopping center. Includes a tan metal canopy fascia with concrete masonry unit canopy columns. Signage for the facility will be updated to a design that's consistent with Costco standard logo and the warehouse signage, and includes one 20-square-foot Costco wholesale sign on each canopy facade. The bottom right corner shows an example of that red light, green light system I mentioned and how that will look and operate. This is just a rendering showing how the facility is anticipated to look from Washington Boulevard with full landscape maturity. And this one is from Walnut Avenue as well. So in conclusion, the project is consistent with the zoning code and general plan. I will provide various mobility and sustainability upgrades to the site, and the overall intent is to improve the member fueling experience, reduce queues, and improve overall site circulation. Thank you. We appreciate your consideration of our request. We accept all conditions of approval, and our team is available to answer any questions that you might have.
Great. Thank you so much for your presentation. Commissioners, do we have any questions for the applicant? Okay. I mean, I, just in case there's any clarifying questions before we move to public, the rest of the public comment. Thank you. We'll have you come back up if we have any questions after public comment.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, can you let us know how many speakers we have?
We have three speakers registered.
Okay, we can go ahead with three minutes per person, and go ahead.
All right, I'll read out the names of the speakers. We have Eve Rappaport, George Stone, and now Alsu Daniali. And I will call Eve Rappaport.
Hi, I'm Eve Rappaport. I live on Walnut and in the city of Los Angeles. And I realize I did also do some ecomments in Granicus. I don't know if they got through. I did them twice because it was kind of a mess. Anyway, we're not opposed to the expansion of the Costco gas station. What we're opposed to is that it's going to be on the corner of our street. And the big problem that I think we have, and I'm here with my husband and our neighbor, is that Costco is loading all their sausage-making onto the west side of their property, which is Los Angeles. Your consultant even just said there were problems looking at the other parts of the site because of residences to the north and the east. The only part of, is Los Angeles, is the west side. We didn't used to have the loading dock there. Now we have it, and now we're going to have the fueling station. So those are problems. The other problems are, there's a huge contradiction in your documents. One of them says you can load during the night every hour on the hour between 10:00 and 6:00. Another document says you can't load it all, refuel between 10:00 and 6:00, and I believe they're talking about fueling trucks. And I have to just say, as somebody who's worked in municipal government for over 35 years, that kind of mistake really makes me concerned about how the city of Culver City is going to manage this project because I feel like it's being rubber stamped. And I know there's support for it in the neighborhood, and that's great. But what people are saying is, fewer queues, great. I really question some of the studies. They're saying that it's only to, and it's to make the Costco refilling experience better. Great. They're saying there's going to be no more cars. How can anybody say that? I mean, what is that based on? In my experience, more capacity means more cars. So I don't get where some of this is coming from. And I know we talked to the traffic engineer, and he's like, oh, no, no. If that Starbucks was still there, there'd be more trips than these 30 fueling stations. Logically, that makes no sense. What we're concerned about is, there's already ways directing people onto Walnut as shortcuts. If I was coming out of Costco, and I do shop at Costco, I don't drive there, fortunately, I don't have to. But people are going to be coming up from Walnut. There are already Costco trucks that kind of try and shortcut through our neighborhood because it's a mess. And I really would encourage the city of Culver City to work with the city of Los Angeles on master planning. That traffic area, it's a mess. They're one-way streets. The police don't even stop where they're supposed to stop. Everybody goes up the one-way street in the wrong way. And I do think that would help alleviate some of the concern in the neighborhood. There really feels like there's no, no melding between the city of LA and Costco.
The time is up?
Yeah, got it. And if somebody would just talk about the timeline because nobody's mentioned how long this is going to take and when it's going to start.
Thank you for your comments.
Our next speaker is George Stone.
Hi. I'm Eve Rappaport's husband. And what, we're all, I'm as concerned as she is, are her neighbors. My biggest concern is, I've actually measured it. The distance from my house to the corner of what was, what is, was the Verizon store is one of the buildings to the west of the property. From our property to the corner of the Verizon store that is slated to be torn down is between 170 feet and 180 feet. The safe distance to live from a gas station, if you do any research, because of the benzene leakage from both underground tanks as well as pumping in general, is over 500 feet. The safest distance is over 1,000 feet. When we bought property on that street, there was no gas station on the corner. The gas station is where it should be. It is halfway up a commercial block on Washington Boulevard. You're proposing to move it to our neighborhood. Not only are you proposing to move it to our neighborhood, it's between 275 feet and 300 feet from a preschool called the Morning Glory Preschool, which is behind us on Lincoln and the Lincoln Boulevard and the alley. Children are there every weekday of the week. Benzene is a carcinogen. Fuel tanks are known leakers, and it's expensive to maintain a filtering system for the gas that leaks out when you're pumping. Those are my main concerns. I, like my wife, don't have any objection to you expanding the gas station, but it should be expanded on the commercially, heavily commercial street of Washington where it's located. There is absolutely no vision, way that we can visualize that you could not, that Costco could not do that. There's only a, like a Jiffy Lube, Valvoline. We're also concerned about the light pollution. Every time we walk our dog down Washington Boulevard at night, the lights on all night from the gas station. So that's going to spill over too. But our biggest concern is benzene.
Time is up?
And the amount of problems that will cause the neighborhood.
Thank you.
Our next speaker, our next speaker is Alsu Daniali. We do not have anyone via webex that joined. So that is, those are the, of our speakers.
Okay.
We just had three speakers register, but they tried to register and were not able to.
I mean, I'm welcome, we're welcome to have them come speak if, as long as that's, as long as you let the clerk know your name so that she can...
Can I? Last name McCready, M-C-C-R-E-D-I-E.
I-E, McCready?
Yes.
Got it, okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, if there's any other speakers, if you could meet with the clerk while she's speaking so that we can, yeah.
Hi, I'm Paula McCready. I actually am a neighbor of these people who just spoke. And my concern is, is they just blocked off a way for us to get home on Venice Boulevard. Now we're going to stop us to be able to get home off of Washington Boulevard. Our only way in is on Lincoln now. I mean, I just don't know how we're supposed to be able to get home at this point because you can't turn in between Lincoln and Walgreens anymore on to, what is this street?
Glencoe.
Glencoe, Glencoe. So they blocked our, they blocked our left turn off of Venice Boulevard onto Glencoe. Glendon, on Glendon. So we can't get into the neighborhood that way. And now we're blocking off our access into the neighborhood where we live. There's barriers all around the neighborhood. So how are we actually supposed to access our house? And that's, that's another concern that I have, actually, because it's been impossible already to get home from work. So that's a big concern. And then my other concern is, nobody ever came and tested in our houses like for environmental testing for the air pollution that's going to happen. I live directly across the dock from the trucks that run all day and all night. They hit the dock all day, cause earthquakes in my house probably 20 times a day. I don't know when there's an earthquake because it's an earthquake every day at my house from Costco's dock. And having the extra cars down on our street with more pollution down there, I'm just really concerned about the air quality in our houses on that street. So that would, that would be my concerns. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you. We do not have any additional speakers. Anybody else that would like to speak, who'd like to come up?
First name is E-I-R-E. Last name J-U-A-R-B-Z.
Audience?
Yep.
All right.
Hello. So I am the first house on Walnut, right across the street from Costco. So I am less than 300 feet, probably 150 feet away from the corner of Verizon store that they're going to demo to the gas station that they're planning to build. Right now, already, as our neighbors express concern about the noise, the fact that the trucks are running all night, the fact that trucks do get stuck on our block, they can't get out. But most importantly, the environmental hazard and the carcinogens from the gas, regardless of the fact of all these state-of-the-art, you know, equipment that you guys are planning on putting in, it doesn't guarantee anything. I mean, our house is right there. Already, the noise, just everything, you know, the lights. Now we're going to see the green and red lights for the, you know, stop and go, whatever, for the, when the queues are available. That's going to be going like all day. The gas station's open at 5:30 in the morning, and they close at like 9:00 o'clock at night. So... So what's, you know, we're going to be inundated with like nonstop noise like we already are. We've got trucks idling across the street in the Costco parking lot all day, all night, with no concern about the neighbors. And yes, we do have that one preschool that's directly behind my house, but there's also another preschool three doors down from our house that obviously environmentally, you know, worry about the kids in the neighborhood. There's an elderly woman that lives next door to Eve and George, and she's been there for 60-plus years, you know? When we purchased our house, there was no gas station. How does this impact our property values, you know? If we even wanted to rent the house, let's just say, how are we going to get renters? We are going to lose a significant amount of, you know, income and overhead from the impact that these gas stations will have. And the landscaping, already because it's on the L.A. side, Costco doesn't do anything for the landscaping on the west side. They don't do anything about the trash. They don't do anything about the homeless. They have security that goes around, and they smoke cigarettes and joints with the homeless people. So, you know, they're bro-ing down with them. There's really no, they don't care what happens on our side. And, you know, their landscaping, their beautiful landscaping, they're going to thin the landscaping out for, you know, so that the homeless people can't live there. Well, that's going to increase the noise and the light and everything else. It's not going to filter anything out for us. So those are my concerns.
Time is up?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Before, thank you. Okay. Vice Chair Menthee?
Under the others. So, Frail, thank you for giving your presentation. Really appreciated that. I wanted to just dig into a few questions. One of the things that surprised me when I, when I read through the project report was that the one sort of issue that sort of stuck in my mind is that when you dig up, you know, a gas station, usually this is a process that sometimes causes pollution, sometimes there are toxic situations. It's remediation of a gas station is usually an issue that gets talked about. I didn't see a lot of discussions. I was just wondering, what is the plan for handling that?
So the existing fuel facility will be decommissioned in accordance with local, state, federal regulations. There are permit approvals that need to happen and be secured in order just for that piece of the scope. And that's all handled through the county environmental health department. There are also certain testing requirements that need to happen and sampling results that need to be taken as part of the UST removal process. And so all of that will be evaluated through that process in conjunction with the applicable state agency required.
So no matter what we do tonight, they will still be looking at those issues? That's correct?
What was that? I'm sorry.
No matter what we do tonight, the county will still be
Correct.
Going through those issues with that? Okay.
Yes, yeah.
And I do frequent that Costco, but I cannot remember. The Starbucks Verizon on that corner, was it the case you could previously access that from Washington and Walnut? Or could you only access that from the interior of the Costco?
Only from the interior of the Costco. So the access to that area, we are not modifying any site access points for the site at all. So the same access points that were there for the Starbucks and Verizon, or today's conditions, will continue to be provided after the project.
And I know where you're going to be installing LED lighting at the new facility. What is the current lighting at the existing facility?
All the site lighting is currently LED.
And just to understand the trips, obviously you are expecting more people who use a fueling station than currently use a fueling station, right? But your, the idea is that these commercial buildings won't no longer be attracting cars, so the net trips will be essentially zero. That's, that's the expectation?
Well, I'll have Costco's traffic consultant come up. They're probably better equipped to speak to that question.
That, if they will do that, that'd be great. How do we get to zero on that?
Yeah, it's a great question. Good evening, commissioners. I'm Amy Lopez with Kittleson and Associates. We prepared the traffic study and other things we talked about earlier. You're essentially correct. It's that there will be a modest increase in, in trips generated by the fuel station. This is based on data that Kittleson has collected at multiple Costco fuel stations where we collect before and after data when there's essentially an expansion. The moving it onsite isn't the relevant factor, it's the increased size. And so multiple sites, it's demonstrated, there's a modest increase in the trips, but it's really the same membership that can come, just as the membership that's there today. So it's a pretty modest increase. And so it's because two commercial buildings are being displaced that have had traffic through the years, understanding currently the buildings are vacant, but historically on the site, there's been activity there. And so it's, the amount of traffic affiliated with those two buildings was greater than what the expected increase would be for just the fuel station. And so it's, you're subtracting a larger number than you're adding, and you get to, what the data shows, you actually get to a negative number, but we can call it zero.
And on the site itself, you know, those of us who go there frequently know that it backs up so far within the site, and when you turn onto Glencoe, it becomes sort of a hazardous thing to try to get through that traffic. The traffic will now be all the way on the Walnut side? Is that where it's going to be?
Um.
Where's the backup going to be?
Got it, thank you. So what, well firstly, our analysis is showing we don't expect that kind of queuing on the site that exists today. The facility itself, as Julie pointed out, will be larger with more fueling positions. And again, what, what we have seen through the years when we study before and after conditions, measuring for the queue length, is that with a larger processing power, it really serves the members faster. More people are served at the same time. And so it really works through that queue a lot faster. And so what the data show is actually shorter queues after an expansion. So that's part of the story. As to, you know, right before Memorial Day, or right before the Fourth of July, or when people are going to head out of town, and it's just an unusually busy day, the queue management plan that we've prepared in conjunction with the operators on the site would actually send members around the site to then come down the Walnut side of the parking lot destined for the new fuel station. So people would be away from the main body of, it sort of just brings people around and out of the main parking area, and it all would keep everybody away from the In-N-Out side because now things are going to be separated to the west and the east.
But that's still not on the street? That's within the parking lot?
Oh, no, this is in the parking lot. All of this is onsite, and that's important to Costco, and we know that's important to the community.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah.
I have some questions. Maybe this is for, is it Julie?
But not for me, okay.
I have maybe some for you. Can you pull up the access map again? Can somebody just walk through how you actually get through and where you impact with In-N-Out, if, if at all?
I don't, I cannot, because I'm not in control of it.
Ruth, do you think you can? Yeah, just one second.
Sorry.
The clerk is pulling up that page.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, I wasn't the presenter. All right, we'll go back. Okay.
Okay, so, and first off, just to be clear, you guys do not own the In-N-Out parcel, right?
Correct.
Okay. So can you make it, can you go to the one that's the whole site? Like has the Valvoline and the, and the?
Yeah.
Yeah, there we go.
Is that, okay.
Okay. So when you're leaving the new one, can you show me where you would impact with the In-N-Out? Because they, they must run into each other, right?
Does this, is this, oh, wonderful. Okay. So here's the access from Washington.
So that's somebody coming in to go to In-N-Out, right?
During, they come and wait.
Yep.
And come around and enjoy their In-N-Out. And when they're going to head back out, this is an internal intersection, right? And so they're trying to make a left to come back out.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Now for the fuel station, people have ideally just used this drive aisle, come in here, pass through, and then they exit right here. And they can choose to either go right to this intersection and go wherever they're going next, or they could also depend, because it's a short stretch, they could actually go left and then head up into the parking field.
Okay.
So In-N-Out and gas traffic are essentially interfacing at an internal intersection that has stop control on the east and west sides and does not, and essentially coming, but not for the northbound of the entry because you want traffic to be able to flow in. So it's a managed intersection.
Okay. Why was, is retail just not viable anymore? Or there must be, there must have been some analysis of that, right? I mean, I know they're vacant, but did you try to re-lease those buildings?
I will let another member of the team speak to that question.
Good evening. This is Teresa Garcia. You know, we, the uses on there, the leases had run out, and it's just right around COVID, the decision was made for the leases to run out and for them not to renew. So Starbucks and Verizon, and I can't recall the other use, just they didn't renew their leases. And so at that point, we made the decision to just kind of hold our property and see what the options were at the time.
Okay. So I'm guessing the fueling facility is more of an impact for you than having it released as retail? Okay. Is this a standard spec for Costco? Like is this, this has been done before, this fueling station?
This particular size.
The number of, number, yeah, size, number of?
Yes, so this is one where we are actually looking at this particular size. We actually just designed one in our Garden Grove location that is of this size, and that was also similar, which was a relocation of a building that we had purchased, and we relocated away farther from our front doors to kind of alleviate the traffic and improve the circulation.
And is Garden, is that a similar site context with residential and, you know, urban infill?
Yes, so there's residential, if I'm getting my bearings correctly, there is residential on the east side, in the east side, yes, and on the south side as well.
Okay. When you're under construction, is there a gap? Is there ever a time where you, there is no fueling station, the old or the new? Or does it like sequence out where there'll never be a gap?
Yes, so that is our intent for it to sequence out. So, you know, when we start our construction schedule, we'll start with decommissioning, or I'm sorry, decommission, or demoing the existing buildings, and we'll build the fuel facility. And once that's up and operating, then we shift the operation. In the following day, we'll start decommissioning the existing fuel facility.
Okay. A few more. The EV facility is open to the public. I don't really get how you can't have more traffic if you have public coming in for EVs. Wouldn't that increase traffic and, like, the parking would be, you know, hampered at the Costco, right? Because you don't have that now. You don't have EV public charging. Is that right?
Can, can I have my traffic engineer speak to that?
So it sounds like you're asking what was accounted for with respect to the EV chargers being open to the public and the trip counts?
Right, because you're getting rid of the existing, is really not parking, right? It's public parking now for EVs, right? Or I guess members can park their?
So any person is free to, and this is, while it's private property, it's a shopping center, it's owned by a private entity. It's not a public lot. Any person is able to drive into this parking lot today and park their vehicle there. So in that respect, it's, it's not a change to that kind of condition that's out there today.
Hmm, okay. There's no EV, but.
I guess I'm trying to draw the distinction between anybody can come and park here today. I understand your point about an EV charger and who could be there, but there also will already be people who are coming to this commercial facility for the amenities that are there today and would have, would likely already be there.
Okay.
Yep.
And then the, this may be for staff. So the Class 32 exemption can only work if the traffic is mitigated and, or not at a certain level, is that right?
Yeah, the studies seem to show that traffic, air quality, noise, and, what's the fourth one?
Water.
Water, that's right.
Otherwise, you would have to do a full EIR, MND, or something?
Yeah, you can only rely on a Class 32 if the studies show that there are no significant environmental impacts from those four resources.
Okay. That's it for me. Thank you. Sorry.
Thank you, Commissioner Brissette. Commissioner Jones?
Thanks. I have some kind of, or one basic question first, maybe, what is the outside fuel drop lane? I see that.
Yeah.
I don't know what that is.
Yeah, and that's a good question. So, let's see if I can get this working. All right, the, just steady my hand. This very dark area here, it's a pull-through space for the fuel truck to essentially pull up alongside the fuel station, and the ports are in the ground right there. But many historical, you know, construction of Costco fuel stations, that drop was kind of within the fuel station area and was within the area where members' vehicles were pulling forward through the queue. And so when a fuel truck would pull in, it was displacing vehicles that were otherwise in queue while it was present. And so this is an improvement to Costco's essentially stop layout of how they develop their fuel stations now, is to have the fuel truck pull up alongside this, the station, but not where members are, so that there's no interference with the queue and it's not impeding the fuel truck. It can just pull up alongside, make its drop, and go on its way.
Okay. And, so the, let's see. The new site has three 40,000-gallon tanks and one 1,500-gallon fuel additive tank. This is not for you, probably. What does the existing site have?
So the existing site has three 20,000-gallon USTs and one 1,500-gallon fuel additive tank.
Three 20,000, you said?
Yes.
Okay, so that'd be 60,000, and the new one has three 40,000?
Correct.
Could be 120, so it's twice as much gas storage?
Yes, and that's to accommodate the additional dispensers so that we have enough fuel on site.
Which is, there's twice as many.
To serve the dispensers, yes.
Would that additional capacity, does that reduce the infrequency of the refueling truck coming?
I don't know if it necessarily reduces it. If it does, it's slightly. Like I said, the intent is so that we have enough fuel to serve the additional dispensers. I'm not sure what the existing fuel deliveries are. Perhaps Harold or Sean, I can check with the team on that, but.
Maybe while we're on this, on the sort of the deliveries. So one of the public commentators had a question, and I didn't totally follow the question. Hopefully someone caught it better than me. She, she said that the report said it could load every hour on the hour between 10:00 p.m. and 6:00 a.m. Was that refueling, or refilling the, the tanks? Or was that, was that about construction? I wasn't sure what the question was.
I said that, each other, one said the tank. I said, the one that's the seat, with one of the other documents, can, and expect you refill the tanks every hour.
Can staff clarify, please?
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Jones. So the business operations description did include a reference to nighttime fuel deliveries. However, we did discuss that with the applicant, and there is an existing condition, so there, this is a CUP modification, there is an existing condition of the existing CUP that restricts that and will be carried over, so that will not be permissible per the conditions of approval.
And the applicant is, is fine with that?
Yes.
As you said earlier, okay, thank you. So I think this is a question for the traffic consultant.
Can staff clarify, please?
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Jones. So the business operations description did include a reference to nighttime fuel deliveries. However, we did discuss that with the applicant and there is an existing condition. So there, this is a CUP modification, there is an existing condition of the existing CUP that restricts that and will be carried over. So that will not be permissible per the conditions of approval.
And the applicant is fine with that?
Yes.
As you said earlier, okay, thank you. So I think this is a question for the traffic consultant. I took what you said earlier, but there's something that might contradict that or I just, maybe I just don't understand it. In the, this isn't in the traffic section of the category 32 exemption report, the Class 32 report. It's on the, on the second page of that, of that report, it's in like the summary. It says there will be no increase in throughput, i.e. the total amount of gasoline to be dispensed yearly. So it says there's going to be no increase in gasoline dispensed yearly in that. Now, that's not the traffic section, so maybe that is someone else?
Correct, so the fuel facility to operate requires an air permit, a permit to operate through the air district. And as part of that permitting process, they place a restriction on the amount of fuel that you can dispense within a year. And so that restriction will stay the same from the existing fuel facility to the new one. So we can, we will not be able to dispense more fuel throughout the year than what we're currently allowed to do.
And what, what happens if, and you monitor that, I guess, yeah?
Yes, yeah, so there's monthly reporting that we need to submit to the air district to show how much emissions the fuel facility is emitting and how much fuel is being dispensed. And if we did go over that or get close, the fuel facility would need to shut down until the start of the next year.
And right now, do you dispense up to that limit every single year?
I don't believe so, no. I have to double check the records, but I don't, not to my knowledge.
Okay. So it's not that you can't dispense more than you currently do, but you can't dispense more than you have been allowed to dispense in the past, but you've never dispensed that amount. So it seems, I mean, this, this still seems incorrect to me that, especially given what the traffic consultant said about, they see all these new trips at other sites that have, that have expansions. Presumably those trips generate some additional use of gasoline. But this report says there would be no increase in throughput, the amount, total amount of gasoline to be dispensed yearly.
Right, so what I believe the intent was, and I don't know even if you have any additional information there, but like I said, it has to go back to the permitting requirement. Yeah, Sean, if you?
I'm Sean Mack and I'm the regional admin manager for Costco. I have Hawaii and Los Angeles. And I also have the distinction of running that Culver City Costco for a period of time in my career. So what she's talking about is we have a certain amount of gallons that we are allowed to pump legally. You, you get your limit from this, from the air quality management district and that's how much you're allowed to pump. In the instances where we would hit that maximum throughput, we'll shut the station down. We have stations that that happens to in Southern California, we'll close for a day or two in a month if that happens. This particular station hasn't done that much volume. When we do the remodel, there's a chance it could get to that volume, but it would not be probably for a period of time.
Do you have, do you have an estimate of, so the?
It's a maximum of 26 million gallons a year, I believe.
But do you have, do you have an estimate of how much more, like a percent increase? Because the report says zero percent increase, but you're saying that there's?
Zero percent increase in the total throughput allowed.
Allowed, but I mean?
That won't change. As far as how much increase, we won't know until we open the station.
Okay.
And I'm going to tell you that it'll probably, essentially it's a modest increase. I would guess they'll probably see a 10% increase in gallons out of the gate and then that grows over time.
In the?
And I would tell you, you know, from our experience, so we just opened one of the stations of a similar format in Chino Hills this week. We opened one in Tustin and what we found is, just like the traffic engineer described, for the most part, our member base doesn't change. And particularly in the west side of LA where it's landlocked, it's not like a whole bunch of new people are moving in, right? That member base is the member base. But what happens is instead of us, you know, leaking out into this driveway or into the street or jamming up the parking lot, that queue now moves into the station. Less people idling, less people milling around in the lot. I can tell you for sure, I used to run Culver City, it's a nightmare getting the gas trucks in to make a gas drop. They sit and wait and wait and idle and wait and idle and wait and idle. So now we'll have a dedicated drop lane, they'll come in, they'll pull, they'll drop their gas and they'll make their way out. It's clean, it's more efficient, it's safer, less of a hassle, less problems on the streets and in the parking lot.
So from the traffic report, they say, and then looking at other expansions, in all cases, peak queues and wait times are significantly reduced. Those members who previously chose not to purchase fuel because of the wait times will likely do so after the expansion when operations are improved. And so the increases, so the, the biggest one, this is when they went from 16 fueling positions to 24 fueling positions. The number of trips increased 63%.
That's your same member who was already coming to shop. Now may have come to get milk and eggs, looked at the gas line, said the heck with it, I'm out of here. Now they stop and get gas instead of going to a gas station down the street.
So I, I wouldn't be surprised if the, the number of gallons that dispensed was 63% more. If there's 63% more.
It would, well, because your member base doesn't change.
Right, I'm asking about the, sort of the amount of gas pumped. That this, the only evidence I have before me of like how much gas you're going to pump is going to increase is like these, this list of, of trips generated. And at one of them where they, there was a small, a much smaller expansion, it was 63% more.
It varies on how impacted the station is and what their member base is.
And this one, this one seems like it's got pretty bad problems right now that you're really going to fix.
Correct.
To me, that would translate to a lot, a lot more gas pumped.
Over time, absolutely.
Whereas the report says no more gas dispensed.
No, no more throughput.
That's, that's not, so, so throughput is, it means what you're allowed to or what you're actually going to pump?
What you're allowed to, not necessarily what we're, like right now, there's a terminal velocity, right? There's only so many cars that can make their way through there, right? End to end all day long. But once you end up with more fueling positions, they're going to be able to flow through and actually get gas.
Okay. Okay, understood. All right. Okay, I think I'm, I understand the, the gas dispensing question. I do want to, I have one more question on the traffic part of it. When you looked at these other, other expansions. So I'm looking at the report, at the top of page 44, says weekday daily trips, trip rates for the existing site were calculated based on trip generation counts for fueling facilities with 16 positions. For the proposed project, the daily trip rates are based on trip generation counts for sites ranging from 22 to 24 fueling positions. The trip rates were then multiplied by the number of fueling positions to calculate the number of daily trips with the existing proposed gas station. So what I'm reading is if, let's see, if, if, if an increase to 24 fueling positions resulted in 24 additional trips. Then you said, okay, well, one trip per fueling position. So if this is going to be 30, then that would be 30 additional trips. Is that, is that the math?
She can give you the math on that one.
Thanks for the question, Commissioner. That's not the math. Again, going back to the concept that there, this is a, Costco is a member, has a member-based business model. The people that can come are the, today are the same people who will be able to come when, you know, if the fuel facility is expanded. And so the demand for gas remains the same in the future if a new facility is available and it's larger. And so it's not a trips for a fueling position kind of a question. It's not a linear thing.
Right, I, I got that from the other part of the analysis. But, but what I'm trying to understand is this part. The trip rates were then multiplied by the number of fueling positions to calculate the number of daily trips. That sounds like a linear analysis to me.
So what we're, what we're saying is we're taking the expansion, the amount of expansion there and we come up with what's the expected average increase for a facility of this size. And that is multiplied by, like the percent change is being multiplied by how many trips are out there currently. It's sort of a growth piece. It's not a, it's not really about X number of trips for a fueling position. We're just looking at growth when it expands based on the existing amount of traffic there at the time of the beginning, at the existing facility.
But to, but to extrapolate from 22 fueling positions to 30 fueling positions, it's, it seems like you're doing a, doing a linear extrapolation there. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not?
I guess, is there more of a question you're coming to though? I feel like there might be more to your thinking than you've asked me so far.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just trying to understand how this, how you have these other, other, other expansions that were more limited.
Okay.
And in, in each of those, just like here, the expansion wasn't the only factor that resulted in the numbers that you have in this, in this table. Right? So like you changed the configuration, some of them got better queuing too, maybe. Some of them already, maybe you already had great queuing and they didn't really need the improvement, that you just wanted more fueling positions. Maybe some of them, you had to demolish parking spaces to, to build them. Maybe some of you didn't have to demolish any parking spaces. There were other, each of these is its own thing, right? But then you're using these numbers just to calculate the expected change for the expansion in fueling positions. And then you, and then you, on top of that, you add this other analysis about, well, we got rid of these, these retail stores. And so therefore we can reduce this number. Because if you're just looking at this table, like when Costco expands its, its gas station, what usually happens?
And which?
A lot.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
A lot, a lot more people come. In almost every instance except for one, which was northeast San Jose, I don't know what happened there. And so usually a lot more people come. If we look at every other Costco gas station expansion. And we're doing a significantly bigger one here where we're not just, you know, adding 25% more fueling stations, we're adding, you know, we're doubling it. And it, it's hard for me to take seriously the analysis that then says, well, this is going to decrease the number of trips.
Okay. I can provide some clarifying information if that's kind of what's got, where you're at, okay. So the, let's think about the fuel station trips itself and then we'll talk about the two buildings. Because these are two components of a complete analysis. When Kittleson studies fuel station expansions for Costco throughout the state and in other parts of the country, this is the methodology we use, which is a stronger methodology than looking to ITE to look at gas stations with or without, you know, convenience stores and things. Because it's a member-based business model. And so there are all the factors that sort of make this make more sense to actually study the business itself as opposed to using ITE. So starting with that, that's why we're looking at Costco-specific data. And then what we're trying to measure here is in a constrained market, so to speak, because it's a membership-based business. It isn't like a Shell or Chevron that's just available to anyone. So the demand is limited, it's constrained by the member base. And so we understand it won't be linear. And then the data have shown that over time. When we see Costco expand a facility, you know, from smaller to larger, we'll see there is an increase in the total number of trips that are coming through in the peak hour, which is what's being reported out here because we're focused on a peak hour. We also see there's some increase in the daily. But overall, the more fueling positions you add, you don't keep getting the same kind of growth because the demand is constrained. And so by studying how many trips are going through the fuel facility during the peak hour under the before or an existing condition, and then after a new larger facility opens and you give it six months to kind of normalize, now how much traffic is there? We see an increase, but not, you know, not kind of commensurate to the size of the, the facility increase. And so that's why you're seeing different percentages in that table that's showing how we arrive at what's the average increase expected to be. To your point about, okay, this site, you had to take some parking stalls, that site, maybe the circulation got better. There's no doubt that various factors are in play. That's true in any body of analysis when you're looking at an existing facility and using it to project into the future. But what we know is by studying Costco's conditions, that's still going to give all of us a much more robust analysis to depend on than if we just leaned on ITE. So we're still doing a, having a more robust analysis than we would otherwise have. And then just, you'll just bear with me because I want to get to kind of all your pieces and then. So what the analysis is saying is, you know, if there were no buildings, no commercial buildings being displaced, right? If this was truly Starbucks and Verizon are still there or someone else has come into those spots, but you know, those commercial buildings are continuing to operate just like they have for years and years and years with activity. And Costco somehow managed to make this kind of expansion relocation occur on the site, the study would show an overall increase in the amount of trips coming to this commercial center because you would have all of that retail in those two buildings plus the modest increase at the fuel station. But what the traffic study is showing is that the amount of trips that have already been coming to the shopping center historically, considering the fact that those are two retail buildings that are approved for any use, like anybody could just go get their, I mean, this is simplistic, but you know, anyone could just go get their business license and start running something there without much need for an approval, no traffic study needed. And more traffic would come to the site. So the traffic study is showing us because those retail spaces are being displaced, so are the trips that would otherwise be affiliated with any businesses operating there. And it is a common traffic engineering practice to take something like that into account when analyzing traffic's operations anywhere frankly. So it's not some kind of special thing we're doing. This is actually how traffic and trip generation is looked at in the industry, particularly in a shopping center where things can change over time.
Thank, thank you for that, I appreciate that. I don't, I don't want to belabor the point too much, but I do want to say one more thing and give you a chance to respond to it just because I want to understand. But it's, I think it's kind of a hard, I mean, you're an expert, I'm not. I'm trying to explain something and you're trying to explain something to me that's difficult to understand, so I may not get my point across. But I could imagine, you know, these, this, this real data of like before and after, the change that we're seeing there is not, it's kind of all in. It's, what, what's the change due to the, you know, in a simplified version that emphasizes my point but could be wrong, is it's like the change, the increase due to the expansion minus other things that are mitigating that increase. That's, that's what we're seeing in this, in this table. And I could see using that to model what we think the increase is going to be here and then, and then leaving it and not, not, not reducing it further based on, you know, we, because we're going to get rid of these, these stores. Or I could see another way of doing it where you, where you take these numbers and you adjust them to account for things like, at this site, we got rid of some parking spaces. So, so we should increase this a little bit because we're trying to just understand what piece of this is due to the expansion. And then, then when you, when you have those numbers, then apply, apply these other factors that, that we have with, you know, because we're getting rid of these parking spaces, we're getting rid of these, this retail, we think it's going to, going to bring it down. But it's, it's weird to me to take these numbers that are kind of already all-in numbers, already, you know, potentially reduced by other factors at these sites that, that reduce the, the potential trip generation. And then, and then add additional reduction. It feels, it feels like double counting to me. And, and especially in light of the fact that what you're estimating is so different from, from what we see in this, in these tables. That, that's, that's kind of where I'm coming from. I, you already responded to a lot of that with, with what you said, but I just, if you have anything else to say before we go to someone else?
I'll offer that the consideration of parking stall changes or something about site circulation. If this were a study of just some other commercial use, or if this were a study of, hey, we're going to just build a new shopping center and the site plan could be like this, or it could be like that, or it could be like that, how many parking stalls would not be a consideration for estimating trips? It's not a driving factor. Parking doesn't bring people, it's the commercial use that draws people to the location. So that's part of why it's not even being considered in this analysis. But it's also not considered in the transportation engineering practice of estimating trip generation. You would not find in the standard manual, the trip generation manual, which is the standard traffic engineering source for estimating trip generation, you would not find, oh, except take the parking into consideration, or, oh, except take the site circulation. Like, these are not factors that are being woven into trip generation in the industry. So that is why we're not doing it. We're following industry practices for how to estimate trips. And the manual actually says, it is preferable to use site-specific or use-specific data when available. And using the manual's data is secondary to that. So we're doing what the industry recommends we do, which is use use-specific data and following those practices, both to collect it and then to apply it.
Thank you.
Thank you for enduring.
Oh, it's okay.
Did you want to, before?
I thought, is it as simple as saying, because now that you got me thinking about this, if you keep the existing facility, don't do the new, but you open the retail back up, the trips would be higher than what you're proposing here? Is that?
Are you saying, like, expand in place?
No, 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 keep the existing, don't do the expansion, but open back up the retail, which I'm guessing you could lease those to people who would want to be there on Washington? Would the trips be higher than this expansion proposal, doing that case?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, that's, I think, what the summary of that was, to me at least.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, Commissioner. I appreciate that there is more interest in the audience, but we can't go back and forth to the audience, I'm sorry.
I want to thank everyone for coming out tonight. I heard you, and I hear your concerns. And I think, you know, and this is just a small group representing many more people who live right there. And I think we need to be serious about these concerns. And my question was also about Class 32D. How, like, it's pumping gas, it is toxic, it's proven, there's tons of science about it, and it's common knowledge. Like, how does, like, doubling the gas not contribute to air quality when we already know that's a fact? Like, how are we saying this can just get rubber-stimmed through?
So I'll ask our air quality consultant is here and can provide some information, if that's helpful.
Hello, Commissioners, my name is Eric Liu, I work at Ramble, and I was the air quality consultant that did the analysis, that's part of the Class 32 application. So there, the South Coast AQMD sets standards and thresholds for us to look at to assess what the impacts are of projects. And so there is an analysis that fully looks at the change of emissions that will occur through this application. And it specifically looks at the health risk concerns that was raised. And we have models and analyses that consider all the receptors along Walnut, that sensitive location, the school that they highlighted. So it's all looked at relative to the thresholds, and it's all found to be less than the significance thresholds.
Less than significant?
Less than the significance thresholds established by AQMD that basically sets the standard by which we're looking to assess the impacts of any project.
I'm sure there's a lot of math behind that, and I can't speak to that analysis, but I have, I worked on a property, we acquired a property, it was a commercial property, retail center, and there had been a gas pump in the ground like 60, 70 years before. And at the last minute, we had to do an environmental on it. And it was a nightmare. Like, once, you know, I mean, there's so much at stake. So that's, I mean, you can say what you're going to say, and I'm sure your numbers are statistically correct, but we do, like, there are studies that say more that it's toxic, and it's toxic to live next to. And I understand the queue's a problem, and I would, and I'm glad Costco's trying to fix that, but ultimately, there's no guarantee, like, when you build a bigger highway, you don't get a faster highway, you get more cars on the highway. And I'm worried that that's going to happen here, that you're going to put in twice as many pumps and cheap gas, and it's going to be even, you know, even more impact on the community. And the air quality is affected every time that pump comes in and out. There is a release of chemicals, and it may be legally acceptable. But I think as Commissioners, we need to, you know, keep in mind our public that lives here. And really, I feel an allegiance to the people here and less to Costco making money off more gas pumps. You know, I would like to see, I know that it's a problem there now, and I would like to see that fixed, but I'm not, I'm not so sure, I'm not convinced that this isn't just going to make it worse. So, that's it.
If I can clarify one thing you brought up in your scenario of that historical issue, that sounds like to me it was a ground issue, right? Like, the tanks may have leaked or stuff like that.
Right.
That's like a completely different issue to me, like, that will have to get treated, that Julie was talking about, if the existing station has any problems like that, and it would have to be treated, and they'd have to take care of it.
Yeah, I mean, it's...
A different issue to me than the impact of the refueling that happens. That's been studied to assess what the issue, the impact may be.
I mean, that's an interesting point. So in this legal terminology, it doesn't say grounds pollution. It just says air-water noise in traffic. And we've already dissected the numbers on traffic, which, and I think Stephen made some good points. I mean, there's a lot of ways you can look at numbers and analyze things and, you know, come up with this scenario, prove the scenario that you're looking for. But there's also common sense, which is, you're doubling the size of a gas station, it is toxic, once tanks go in, you can't do anything else with that land. So I think it's, I think, I'm not so sure that this meets the criteria to, for Class 32.
So I can address the air side of that, which is, to help avoid any practitioner from sort of just putting their thumb on the scale or coming up with what they want, the South Coast AQMD, as well as state agencies, establish guidances and methodologies for us to follow each time we do this, whether it's for Costco or someone else, or someone opposing the project would look to those guidances too. And so we follow that as a planning tool for all of you and do that analysis in that methodology, so that folks like the Commissioners yourself can look at it and feel confident to say, hey, we're, many, many smart people beyond us here have sort of thought this is the way we're going to look at it, have helped establish those thresholds to say, well, this is a reasonable threshold, like, if we're not going to use a zero threshold, a no development scenario, and say, hey, this is reasonable, we feel this is okay, and this is how we do the analysis. I'd also add that in terms of the air quality, and I believe the other technical experts will say this too, we did an analysis in support of this Class 32, which is as robust as any analysis we would do, even if you push this to go to an EIR. And we did that because we know there can be concerns, and we wanted to do it fully and not take any shortcuts in that way.
Okay, thank you.
I don't have any further questions, I think we've beat a lot of it, covered everything I was thinking of. So can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Thank you, moved by Commissioner Jones, second by Vice Chair Menthe. Please vote. Thank you, motion passes with five ayes.
So to move to the next step here, is there any questions or clarifying questions for staff now that we've heard from public and heard from experts related to meeting the findings or the exemption? Do we have any discussion amongst us? Based on Commissioner Carter's last statements, I understand where she might stand, but is there anything else we wanted to talk about?
I just wanted to comment, I was a little, I'm definitely less concerned, I just would trust that a corporation like Costco has their USTs figured out. I'm not so concerned about the, we know there's no groundwater issue, because we would know that from the various governing bodies, right? They're going to handle the USTs in the right way, I would think, and, you know, with federal law. So that was less of my concern, I was just a little, I get the handling of the, the site is messed up from a fueling perspective now, I go there all the time. I was just a little bummed that you wouldn't redo the retail and we could get that back up and running, I guess. That was my, those are like my high-level, big-picture things.
Yeah, I would add to the AQMD question, because, like, I'm an engineer, we do generators for projects, stuff like that. The Southern California South Coast AQMD is like the most restrictive thing there is, and installing and permitting anything like that here is like the most difficult place, you know, including European standards and things like that, is here in Southern California. So the standards that they're following and the data that they're presented here gives me a level of confidence. I, yeah, nothing is not perfect, nothing is perfect, Commissioner, and I totally agree with you there. But, you know, within the requirements that we're dealing with here and the regulations that we're dealing with here, I feel a level of confidence in the data that's being presented because of that. Commissioner?
Sure.
Vice Chair, sorry.
Whatever I am these days. You know, I know the site well, I know many of us do. I lived on Madison when it was opened, 27 years ago? It was like 99 or something, anywhere, 2000. And I've been a member of Costco for the entire time, and in that entire time, not once have I bought gas there, because the lines have been ridiculous for 24 years. So I understand that there is untapped demand among your membership, because literally, my family's one of them. You're going to see your 10% increase, but still probably not going to go. It's a bit of a drive. You know, I think it's a little uncomfortable looking at this and saying, well, we're going to make your exemption because we're just going to not count these buildings that are kind of currently dead anyway. But I sort of think, Commissioner Brissette's point is pretty good, that these probably would be released in that area fairly quickly if you wanted to go do it. So those are my comments on it, thank you.
Commissioner Jones?
I just, for me, well, so, it's, what makes this difficult, I think, is, I was reading studies on benzene before we got here, and that, you know, 70% of gas station workers have an increased cancer risk. And the California Air Resources Board recommends residences should not be sided within 300 feet of a large gasoline dispensing facility, and this is moving a gas station closer to residences. That makes this really hard for me. And just going specifically to the exemption, I read the traffic study, and it is not convincing to me that you would have all of these other sites that expanded their fueling positions by 25%, and they had these big increases, and we're going to, you know, double that, and we're going to have a decrease. I don't understand how, you know, closing these few stores would flip that so far in other direction, especially because we don't know what was happening at these other sites. Did stores close at these other sites? Did they take away, did they take away parking spaces? We don't know what else went into these numbers, and they didn't try to, they didn't try to analyze that. It doesn't, it's just not convincing to me. So I can't, I can't, I don't think I could vote for the exemption. Thanks.
So I guess, at this point, in order to move forward, we need a motion to approve this categorical exemption and modification to the conditional use permit. And I guess the question to the panel here is, is there a motion for that? Okay. It's a motion by Commissioner Brissette, for a second? Okay, seconded by Vice Chair Menthe. Sorry, Ruth.
That's okay. I'll just add it for the record, move by Commissioner Brissette, second by Vice Chair Menthe. Please vote. Commissioner Carter? Thank you, motion passes with three ayes, and we have two against Commissioner, we have Commissioner Carter and Commissioner Jones against.
Thank you. Moving to public hearing, item number two. Public hearing, consideration of a tentative parcel map, number 4280, to construct a detached two-unit residential condominium development at 3556 Helms Avenue. If the staff could run a presentation for us, that'd be great, thank you.
Thank you, Chair, members of the Planning Commission, waiting for that item to come up on the board.
Okay, good evening, my name is Narik Mukherjumia, planning technician. And the item before you tonight is a proposed tentative parcel map for a two-unit detached condominium or space division. The subject site is a rectangular lot with frontage on Helms Avenue. The applicant proposes to demolish the existing single-family home and detached garage to build two new detached condominiums. The subject property is Zoned R2 with a low-density two-family land use designation, and the surrounding properties are also Zoned R2 with a mix of single and multifamily units. The project conforms with the existing zoning and land use designation of the neighborhood. The proposal seeks to replace the existing structure with two detached condominiums totaling 3,660 square feet. The maximum height of the buildings would be 23 feet and 10 inches, adhering to the code limit of 30 feet. And each unit includes an attached two-car garage accessed by a shared driveway and screened by the front unit. This is the proposed site plan for the project. They show the detached units and the parking court that is accessed via the shared driveway from Helms Avenue to the west. The proposed project was reviewed using the goals and policies of the multifamily design guidelines. The buildings have a contemporary design with the two structures mirroring each other. Each structure is two stories and includes various building articulations to create an active facade. Roof decks have been set back from roof edges to increase privacy for both residents and neighbors. Landscaping will include drought-tolerant species. These are a few renderings of the proposed project. The applicant will share a more detailed presentation to highlight their design philosophy during the public hearing. Tonight, the Planning Commission will make a determination on the tentative parcel map. The municipal code allows for smaller lot sizes for condominium purposes and the applicant is proposing two airspace condominiums. The existing parcel size will not change and otherwise meets code standards. The public right-of-way and utility access will be maintained and finalized during the final map approval. As part of the project review, staff ensures SBA compliance. The city's housing division preliminarily determined that the subject property is exempt from SBA based on the existing tenant's income record. Prior to plan check submittal, the housing division will provide a final determination. Staff would like to introduce an additional condition of approval. The project was noticed on July 3, 2024. One letter was received from the public prior to public hearing. This letter came from the California Housing Defense Fund in support of this project. The project is considered exempt from CEQA as a Class III Small Structures Project for the development of two units and Class 15 Minor Land Division for two airspace condominium subdivisions. At this time, staff recommends the Planning Commission adopt a resolution approving the categorical exemptions and the tentative parcel map subject to conditions of approval. Staff would like to read into record the following condition of approval to ensure SBA compliance as appropriate. If a residential unit is proposed to be demolished or if a residential unit was demolished within the past five years, the applicant shall submit an application for a replacement unit determination as required by the housing crisis of 2019, as amended by SP 8 and AB 1218 California Government Code Section 66300, along with any required replacement unit determination fee. The applicant shall submit the application for replacement unit determination prior to submitting an application for a building permit. If the replacement unit determination demonstrates that any residential unit is a protected unit, the applicant shall comply with all requirements of Government Code Section 66300 prior to issuance of building permit. Staff is available for any questions you may have for us, and the applicant team has their own presentation that they will provide during public comment. Thank you.
Thank you. So will that condition be added as one of the condition numbers in the, okay?
That's correct.
Okay. Any questions for staff, everybody?
Just a clarification. So why, if it's less than 5,000 feet, this is coming to Planning Commission because of the tentative map?
Correct.
Which means we really can only make a resolution on the map, not on the design and stuff like that?
And just to, it says in the staff report, but I want to say it out loud, too, that the proposed revisions would streamline this process to administrative approval. That's correct?
With the adoption of the new zoning code?
In the future, not to, but yeah.
Correct.
Thanks.
Thanks for highlighting that. We need a motion to open the public hearing.
Thank you. Moved by Commissioner Jones, second by Commissioner Carter. Please vote.
I'll give a voice vote. It didn't come up for me.
Yeah, disappeared.
Oh, for everybody.
We can take the, we did, I took, we did take the motion, right?
Yes.
Okay. It was Commissioner Jones and Commissioner Carter. Yeah, and the vote disappeared. Okay, I'll take a voice, a voice vote. Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Carter?
Yes.
Commissioner Brissette?
Yes.
Vice Chair Menthee? Chair Roman?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes with five ayes.
Okay. Do we have speakers for this? I know we have a presentation from the applicant.
I'm no speaker.
We have a person signed up, that signed up al-sud on denial and he didn't show up. So that was the only speaker we had.
Okay. So let's go ahead and have the applicant come up.
Hello, Commissioners. Good evening. Thank you for being here. Happy Wednesday. Try to make it quick. I know we have a long conversation before this one. So, okay, so I guess I'm just going straight forward to the project, you know, existing rentals and existing single-family residence with a detached garage on it. We're proposing to demo the existing home to propose two new condos. Okay? The concept by itself, as you can see, is trying to blend with the architectural style of Culver City, at least on Helms Avenue. We have a few projects similar to this. Let me move over here. I'll move forward to the material concepts. So the material concept on the exterior design is made of metal siding on one side of the building. And then to smooth things out, we have the wood siding on one side. And then, of course, yes, continues with stucco and different colors of stucco as well on the project. Obviously, the proposed rooftop has an iron rating around the property, around the roof deck to protect, of course, the area, to cover the area. This is another view of the roof deck that we have. It's about 400 square feet. Again, it has a setback just to have privacy between the neighbors and privacy for the future tenants of this building as well. I guess we can move to interior design. Concept of it, more than anything, the foreplan, the foreplan of each unit consists of three bedrooms. The unit in the front has three bedrooms, four bathrooms, so, and attached to garage into it. So of course, as any other condom or single-family residence, we have living room, dining, kitchen, and then continues with a bathroom at this in the first floor and of course, a garage into it. On the second floor over here, we have the three bedrooms. We have the access to the roof deck, a small little opening to the first floor just to create more natural light to the first floor. Each bedroom that you see here has its own full bathroom on it. And one of the bedrooms has a balcony that goes towards the front. And moving to the unit in the back, same concept, similar concept, about the same square footage as well. Attached garage, you enter, you have a powder room, you know, it's a little bigger concept just because of the layout. We can extend, we don't have the driveway, so we have bigger footprint. It continues to the second floor, three bedrooms, three baths, small little balcony, and then the stairs, of course, goes towards the roof, the roof deck. Same concept here, we will have a small little opening from the second floor to the first floor for more natural light and, you know, it's kind of a design concept into it. And, you know, these just are some interior renders. This is the first unit in the front. And just give you an idea of the, of the concept and the scale of the project. So that explains the whole concept and the project. So if you have questions, I'm open to answer.
Are there any questions for the applicant, Commissioner Carter?
No, not at this time. Thank you.
Commissioner Brissette?
I have, yeah, I have a question. I don't know if, maybe I'm not allowed to ask this, but are you, is the applicant, are you going to build this on spec or are you looking to get it approved and then you're selling it to potential buyers?
No, no, we're planning to develop the property. I maintain.
You're going to build this speculatively and then sell it to, you know, to different condo buyers?
Correct.
Okay.
You're saying that trying to sell the property with RTIs? Yeah, we're not planning to do that.
Right. I guess what I was wondering is, could like a, one of those Tom James groups just come in and buy this and do a completely different plan that we see here?
Yeah. No, that's not the idea.
Okay.
Yeah, the idea is to develop it.
Not that I can really say anything. That's it.
Okay.
I guess my one question is, where do you put the solar panels on the roof, given the amount of roof deck? That's not in our purview to put any requirements. I know it goes through building and safety for that requirement.
Right. We should have enough space. Obviously, we had to plan with the solar companies where the best location. In worst case scenario, we can always move the roof deck in different directions as long as we comply with the setback. But as long as we provide enough room or space for the solars and maybe, you know, have it around the roof, that's probably an option.
Yeah, thanks.
Of course.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
If there's no further questions, a motion to close the public hearing. We don't have any speakers that have shown up.
No.
Right.
Thank you. Moved by Commissioner Jones, second by Commissioner Brissette. Please vote. Thank you. Motion passes with five ayes.
Great. Commissioner Jones highlighted the fact that this would probably be administrative moving forward, but even still, let's have our discussion. Commissioner Carter?
I don't have any big questions. I've seen a bunch of projects like this and they seem okay. I, yeah.
Vice Chair Menthee?
Not much. Sam, I was happy to see projects that look like this. We know that we either get these McMansions or we get more than one property that allows more than one family to live here. I'm much happier to see that.
Yeah, I would echo that for sure. Would be curious to hear the pricing on them, but I guess we can't ask that.
Curious.
It'll be public record at some point.
Yeah, I agree with those comments. Also, we don't always see brick on the tentative parcel map. I don't know, it's got nice details, the tentative parcel map.
Yeah.
It looks nicer than other ones I've seen. Also, I mean, the project looks great, too, but I'm supposed to look at the tentative parcel map, so.
Agreed. Okay, thank you. Well, given that, do we have a motion?
Thank you. Moved by Commissioner Menthee, second, Vice Chair Menthee, sorry, second by Commissioner Brissette. Please vote. Thank you. Motion passes with five ayes.
Great. And that would include the condition that was read in at the beginning. I should have said that before we voted, but. Okay, so we move on to administrative item one, a discussion of the draft written report to council regarding Planning Commission's accomplishments and proposed activities, upcoming agenda items for the next six months, and authorize transmittal to council. If staff could bring that up?
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm current Planning Manager Emily Stadniki, and I'm very happy to be here tonight. This item is an overview of Planning Commission's January through June accomplishments and proposed activities and upcoming agenda items for the next half of 2024. As a reminder, it is city council policy that each of the city's commissions, boards, and committees provide a written report on their activities twice a year. In the first half of 2024, the commission reviewed and approved a site plan review and administrative modification for an almost 49,000-square-foot office building at 58 Adams, 5880 Adams Boulevard. You also had discussions on the updated density bonus ordinance and the subdivision ordinance update and made a recommendation to council about wayfinding kiosks on public property. These are listed under upcoming items because the reporting period ends in June. As a reminder, you approved this mixed-use project at 5700 Hanum. Two weeks ago, the CUP for Costco fueling station and the parcel map for the two-unit condo on Helms are also listed here. Looking forward, we currently have these two projects with entitlement applications in, 5813 to 5835 Washington Boulevard and 4233 East Boulevard. You'll be seeing those in the coming months. We also have a total of 11 projects currently in the preliminary stage. They're all listed on page three of the staff report. I'm just hitting some highlights. 5757 Uplander is about 100, excuse me, 1,100 units. It includes affordable component. 10950 Washington Boulevard is proposing 508 units with 77 affordable. 11304 Culver Boulevard is currently proposing 143 new units. 100% are affordable. We have two projects that are dual jurisdictional. 13474 Washington Boulevard has a total of 79 units with 15 in Culver City. 11281 Washington Boulevard has 101 units with 78 in Culver City. And then we have 4315 Sepulveda Boulevard, a five-story mixed-use project with 20 units and 14,000 square feet of commercial. As you all know, the Planning Commission will review and make recommendations on updates to the general plan and the zoning code at our next meeting on August 14. Revisions to the density bonus ordinance and subdivision ordinance will follow shortly thereafter. We also have zoning code amendments in process that deal with objective design standards for streamlining residential development, a comprehensive sign code update, and the transportation demand management ordinance update in collaboration with public works and transportation departments. In conclusion, staff recommends that the Planning Commission approve the Planning Commission list of accomplishments for the first half of 2024, the proposed activity and upcoming agenda items for the remainder of 2024, and authorize that transmittal to the city council. Can I answer any questions?
Thank you. Do Commissioners have any questions? Go ahead.
I just wanted to ask about the TDM ordinance. It's been a while on that. And I know it's not, you're not the lead. So I feel better asking the question. But I'm, is a lot going on or is there other things that are making it take so long, if you know?
I don't know, actually. You know, we are a support to the Transportation Department, which is the lead. Public Works is also involved. Everyone's been quite busy. I haven't had an update lately, but I can check on that and get back to you.
Thanks.
I had one question. The dual jurisdiction projects, you know, one of the comments tonight, although they aren't, although Costco's not dual jurisdiction, but just that coordination with City of LA, what, how much coordination happens between our staff and City of LA staff during one of those projects? Or is there, is it like we do our piece and they do their piece and?
Yeah, we do have initial coordination. Oftentimes, we meet with the councilperson's planning rep, for instance, and kind of collaborate a little bit on the approach. Usually, whichever side of the project has more units and more square footage is the lead. And then there's a decision made as to what sort of permitting is required on both from each jurisdiction.
Okay. And when that comes to us, you will kind of give us that background?
Yes, absolutely.
That's all I have.
I have one kind of related question, or question, comment. So I noticed the 79 units that has 15 in Culver City. And I just had a thought that, you know, as we're working on density bonus stuff, I don't know if there's a reason that they did so much more in LA and, rather than Culver City, but if we can learn something there and, I don't know, maybe, maybe it had nothing to do with the differences in our jurisdictions, maybe it was the site, but I'd be curious to know.
I think that was sort of a physical space constraint, but I don't have a lot of intimate information about that project.
Okay, no problem. I just, you know, you see these things next to each other and then I got an idea, so, but thank you.
Okay. Should we have a motion to, do we need? Do we need to make a motion and then vote to transmit? Yes, we do. Okay. So can we have a motion to transmit?
Thank you. Move by Commissioner Jones, second by Vice Chair Menthee. Please vote. Thank you. Motion passes with five ayes.
Great. And then lastly, a two, selection of committee members for the subcommittee members. If you want to go through what those are?
There is just the one committee, the Board of Zoning Appeals, and we have two appointees for that committee.
Is there a self-nomination on the panel for the Board of Zoning, BZA Board of Zoning Adjustment, which meets when necessary if there is any... Can you describe the task there?
Yes, I think it's on a case-by-case basis. It's, it doesn't happen very often.
Right.
Maybe a couple times a year.
But I mean, what, what triggers a meeting for that? What is the purview of that group?
So this hasn't come up frequently. By way of example, the most recent case I can remember was when Saul was still here. Our code had ambiguities about whether, I think it was an indoor soccer use was allowed in the warehouses under the 90s.
Commissioner Barbara and myself sat on it. I just didn't remember what, like, triggered the...
And so it's a means of basically appealing a director's read of the code, and then the BZA comes to a decision on it, and then that decision is eventually codified in the next zoning code update. So it's where to identify ambiguities in the code and then eventually codify them.
Does that, does that board also, like, when COVID happened, would things come to that board with zoning adjustments for sort of health reasons and things like that, or no?
No. It was, it's an appeal review, if you will.
Oh, so it's...
Yeah.
I was on it before and didn't get to meet it all. I would be interested in doing it again.
Okay.
I was going to say the same thing. I believe I served on it last year and never got to meet, so...
I think, it sounds like we have two willing participants.
We have something in common, by the way. We're both lawyers. It appeals to us, deciding what language means.
Yes.
I don't know. Maybe, maybe, I thought it was obvious to Daryl and I, at least, but maybe not.
Okay.
Sure.
So I'll make a motion, just to formalize it, that Vice Chair Menthee and Commissioner Jones be our BZA appointees?
Thank you. Move by Chair Roman, second by Commissioner Brissette. Please vote. Thank you. Motion passes with five ayes.
Great. Do we have any other... I mean, we talked about public items not on the agenda at the beginning of this, but anything that's come up since we've been meeting?
No, no one else has yet to speak.
Okay, great. Any other items from staff?
One item which came up tonight is that members who did not attend a prior meeting can still vote on the minutes for the meeting. You're welcome to review the video of the meeting, but you're, it's a procedural motion to approve the minutes as accurate. Just asking, if you can.
Is there a issue with abstaining from that? No?
No, none.
Okay.
But we, there are times when, you know, only two members were there and three members were not.
Oh, right, right.
So I'm giving you the information before that happens.
Great, great.
I have a couple things. I just wanted to congratulate Chair Roman and Vice Chair Menthee, and welcome again to Commissioner Brissette. Thank you for joining us. I wanted to remind everyone, I think you guys are well aware of it, but just in case anyone's watching, next, at the next meeting, the Planning Commission meeting, that will be the time that you review and make recommendations on the revised general, the updated general plan and the zoning code update. And that item will be heard at council on August 26. All of the documents, the draft documents are online now at the picture culvercity.com website. That's sort of the central place where anybody can go to find that document, those documents, and draft documents, the EIR, any of the history of the process, and the meeting schedule.
I will be, and Emily knows this already, but I'm going to be driving my daughter to college that day. Like, that's our first day of a four-day trip across the US. But I did figure out and plan on being in a location that I can remote into the meeting, but I won't chair the meeting from that location, correct? I assume, yeah. I'd rather not, probably, but...
We can talk about it offline.
Okay.
Whether this would fall, what teleconferencing requirement?
Okay.
This fall under?
If, if for some reason I can't, I would defer to the Vice Chair for that, just so that you know, not an hour before the meeting.
As long as I get some warning. Thank you.
Right. Okay. With that, we can have a motion to adjourn.
Thank you. Move by Commissioner Jones, second by Commissioner Brissette. Please vote. Thank you. Motion passes with five ayes.
Thank you, staff. Thanks, everybody.
Meeting is adjourned at 8:58 PM.